There we go.
Oh, that's it.
Okay. We haven't started. She's going to go through these slides.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so Bob, why don't you go right to the next slide? There we go. So, so just a brief review, very brief of of why we're here tonight. And Bob had started a little bit of that discussion, but if you recall, a few months ago, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs awarded Hamden a $40,000 grant to develop an MVP prioritization and to also, you got additional money to do a Main Street flood assessment. So we're here tonight just to update you on what's occurred to date. It's called the Listening Session. It's very prescriptive. It's part of this process that all MVP communities go through. And Steve Tyler's also on the on the meeting here. He'll talk briefly about the Main Street flooding assessment, and then we're going to get into the core of the process, which was the prioritization of action items that was determined by town staff and town residents. So if you go to the next slide, Bob. There we go. So as noted, this is a prescriptive planning process. Every community that receives one of these grants and identifies their priorities goes through this exact same process. So we held the core team meeting back on December 16th, and that was held both online and then we we met outside by the Main Street Bridge and on the Mass Audubon property, which provides a resource, potential resource for alleviating some of the flooding on Main Street as well as overall green infrastructure solutions. Then we held the Community Resilience Building Workshops, and this was a discussion again back online that included town staff and town residents to begin to talk about what are some of the threats that the towns experienced as a result of climate change, flooding, wildfires, drought, all of the above, and and what's most important to them with respect to making the town safe and protecting residents and infrastructure from these hazards. And then we have the Listening Session, which is what we're doing tonight, and that's a discussion about what the town determine is their priorities and why they determine that as such. Then we'll complete the summary of findings, which is the written report of everything. And then the town begins to implement some of those priorities. And most of that implementation is going to come from identifying potential funding sources or programs that can help move through some of these. And some of the implementation is going to be relatively easy. It's just a different way of looking at things or making sure there's an alertness to different needs. And you'll see that when we discuss what those priorities were. So the next slide. Is is Steve Tyler unmuted so that he can give an update on the Main Street flooding assessment? I see Steve in the corner.
I'm next, someone. I believe I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you go.
Go on, dude.
Thank you, Mary Viddy Boris Lachman. So on the Main Street flooding assessment, our focus was to look at the two structures, one being the culvert over Mill Brook and one over Eastbrook. And with that, what we found was that culvert is in relatively, the culvert while eligible for various funding programs, is in relatively good condition. And so given its condition, that's typically not something you look at trying to replace. And so what are basically in our report forthcoming, we will talk about its condition, what it's potentially eligible for, and then ultimately, you know, the recommendation to consider the stream crossing standards in the future when that culvert becomes an issue. With regard to the bridge structure, which is closest to the Mass Audubon facility, as you know, that structure is in a in degrading condition. Some aspects of it are poor. It's not low restricted as of yet. It's still declining. We've seen the most recent bridge inspection from the end of 2020. That bridge would be eligible for the our cover grant program as well as the small bridge program. And what we will do is we'll put forth a strategy to pursue that funding in addition to beginning the conceptual design and the conceptual coordination, whether or not a rehabilitation is an option, or if it does in fact need to be upgraded to the current stream crossing standards. In addition to focusing on the bridges, we also looked at the Laughing Brook Sanctuary as well for potential opportunities. We identified a couple of, I'll say mitigative opportunities for helping with the Main Street flooding situation. One of those is converting a manmade pond into a wetland, which would give you some flood storage. I'd say fairly incidental, considering the entire volumes of what flooding could occur in a hundred year flood event that would still likely close and create issues on Main Street. But nonetheless, that opportunity does exist, and it could be, and it would be grant eligible. The other opportunity on site that we identified was, I'll say, more town and stormwater infrastructure related, where potentially in the front of the site, you could divert some stormwater into the into the right away between the roadway and the Laughing Brook Sanctuary and create some stormwater quality treatment and also some flood storage as well as groundwater infiltration. That would also help mitigate with the Main Street flooding. It would provide you with some of the water quality treatment requirements that are that are required on your under your NPDES stormwater permit. So that, you know, is still a viable option at any time in the near or further out future. And with that, we'll also provide an opportunity in coordination with Mass Audubon is going to do a mini MVP community resilience building workshop with students. And with all of that information, engage the residents and stakeholders about the benefits of nation-based solution, two of which spoke about in those two opportunities, the green being the conversion of the onto a stormwater wetland or stormwater wetland, but a natural wetland, and then the stormwater treatment at the front of the site.
Next slide. Did you want to refer to the map, Steve?
So this, just a general overview of all of Hamden, the layers that are turned out right now are the FEMA flood layers. And the green color is the 100 year. The green and blue are both 100 year flood events. And the orange is a 500 year flood event. And so you can see on the easterly side of town, the two books that we looked at, Big Brook and Eastbrook, and what its flooding impacts are on Main Street, they're looking to mitigate. As well as there's other items that came up during the discussion, which is the the dam near downtown Hampton. And as well as, I think, some of those other areas where flooding on some local roads were brought up during the MVP workshop over on the Westerly side of town. And that's that's it for that slide next time.
Okay, so we're not going to by any means go into the two four hour workshops. And and the the, just to let you know, though, that the participants in these two four hour workshops for a total of eight hours of discussion actually stayed and participated. They were rather robust conversations that we had and discussions about what's going on in the town of Hamden. So this slide is just to let you know, this is what climate change is with respect to this discussion and the program that the Commonwealth of Mass put together. So it's rising temperature and it's changing precipitation, and then it's sea level rise. So only two of those three apply to Hamden. But but those were the impacts that were considered as as these participants in the workshops identified the priorities and the opportunities to to make things better. So next slide, Bob. So the matrix, which is populated right now there, and I'm not going to use that to 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 work from because you really can't see much of it, but it just gives you an idea. And there's three pages of these matrices. And the the priorities that came out of them that addressed infrastructure, societal changes, and environmental impacts, all came from the participants in the workshop. So what I did, and you can move to the next slide, is summarize them. And hopefully, we have folks on the call, and I know that there are folks on the meeting call tonight that were part of the workshop, and they can discuss some of what they were thinking about as they contributed to prioritizing these efforts. So Bob did speak about the the, or I'm sorry, Steve did speak about the Main Street Bridge, the rehab versus replacement. You know, that that's a question moving forward. There's potential funding opportunities from multiple sources out there, including the next MVP Action Grant. I don't know if Mark's on the on the call, but I remember Mark, a quote from Mark, that's actually going to be in the report with respect to assessing bridges and culverts. Mark had noted that with the changes in precipitation patterns and more rain and individual events, you ended up with, he didn't know where the next problem was. He didn't know you had a problem until it popped up. So that's not unusual. Culverts and bridges are no longer meeting the the current rainfall, rainfall events that are happening. And so flooding is happening where it never did before with the same infrastructure in place. Assess dam functions. Steve had noted multiple dams had been brought up, the one across from the townhouse that also serves to hold back waters that support firefighting activities. There's some questions about whether it's necessary or whether it needs to actually be improved to 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 retain that 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 function. Another opportunity that was discussed, Board of Health was on the call, and also Highway Department, and vector borne diseases, all noted, an increase in tick, potential Zika, the triple E threats. And so the first thing that could come out of that is expand the education and training for town staff and the and the public with respect to the kinds of protocols that could protect them from the mosquito bites or decrease the mosquito population. And in particular, for Boards of Health and the Highway Department, there's professional associations like the American Public Works Association that do provide these kinds of training documentations. Another thing that was brought up was private wells and Title V systems, both droughts and and intensive rain events can can compromise those operations. The library director talked about building off existing solar facilities to become a green energy model. There was the school was on this on this workshop, and they talked about school facilities being used as emergency shelters, cooling stations. I know with a new EMD coming on board, you know, get that conversation started sooner rather than later. Forest management was brought up, both as a concern with respect to wildfires and droughts, and as well as trees that need to come down before they take down wires. Your stormwater program can be embedded into your climate resiliency, and the hazard mitigation plan needs to be updated in the next year and a half. And these MVP MVP priorities slide right into that. So I just did my quick assessment, and I know that Ted's on the call, and Ted and Bob, if you want to speak to these items, it'd be great.
Muted.
Okay.
I I'm here. I gotta get my picture on, too. Now you got me.
There you go.
I don't know what to say. Other, you know, we've we talked about everything you've mentioned. We're doing a lot of tree work in town already. I think there's going to be more coming up on the the town meeting for finances. The Conservation Committee, which I'm part of, of course, we're doing whatever we can to control and regulate all the things that apply to our end. There's going to be more stuff coming as the weather changes, and the whether it's the Conservation Infinity Planning Board, you know, stormwater, we're all going to have to work in order to at least manage whatever happens in in the in the future, near near future or the farther future. I guess currently, it's the the two bridges, the the culprit, the bridge on North Main. But I know on the map, Mary, I I plugged in a couple places in town that I was concerned about additionally, happened to be on my side of town on the west side, but there are other areas that need to be at least looked at in the future. So there's a bunch of things coming up.
Mary, I have a question. The build off existing solar facilities become energy green? Was there any specific plan there or just a thought?
This was a thought at this point in time. So so what this priority list does is it memorializes these thoughts, and it it begins a conversation. So it it kind of puts it out there that this is an opportunity that the town may want to look at and stay alert to when and if funding might become available to do that. So at that point in time, there wasn't a specific action item, except for looking at becoming a designated green community, because that could open funding opportunities in order to 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 support some of that going green when it comes to power generation.
If if I may, part of it had to do with putting solar either on the townhouse or maybe the schools or something of that nature. That was some of the discussion we had. Not building another big solar field.
One quick question. I know you talked about the fact, and I think it was Steve mentioning, we did upgrade that culvert that caused some of the flooding, or Mary, you mentioned, that caused some of the flooding back in '05. So that really addressed the flooding in the center of town. We still had the flooding, severe flooding by Laughing Brook, but also on the west side of town, too. A lot of that was due to reduced water storage capacity of the scanic. Is there anything in your plan about dredging?
So.
That's really been a concern. Both people, you know, over River Park, etc., where the fact that the scanning has been so silted in, the water is coming out from it rather than being drifted off to the Connecticut River.
So I don't know, Steve, did you want to take that first, and then I'll talk about what the other opportunity might be? He's talking about dredging, but dredging requires a, I don't recall it coming up in the workshop. It's not in my notes.
It's it requires a whole host of things, the Army Corps of Engineers, etc.
Yeah.
But if you go back to the hazard mitigation plan, and some of their, some of their conclusions were the fact that the flooding was occurred because there was no place for water to go because the scanic was not as deep as it used to be way back in the day. And as a remediation for it, is there any possibility of doing something there? Because you can't put the water somewhere else. You have to shift it out. And that's the course that we're looking at. Didn't know if that was something that could be discussed in the plan. Is something, you're right. It takes permitting, it takes money, it takes time. But it is a potential solution.
So what you're talking about, you're one slide ahead of me, but that's okay. So noted, the the MVP designation, the the key component, why a community wants to do this other than having these great conversations and getting people talking about climate change threats, is there's an opportunity to secure funding assistance to make things happen. So based on that matrix that you saw page one of, and follow up conversations with Mark and Bob, there's two projects that stand out with respect to being the town would consider applying for in this next MVP Action Grant round, which is in in April. And one of those projects is to do a townwide assessment of the type of areas you're talking about right now. Can, again, back to what Mark said about, you know, he doesn't know he has a problem until the flooding pops up. It's looking at existing bridges, culverts, green infrastructure, what's going on now in town? Why is there flooding? What's the constraint? And then coming up with a plan as well as some low hanging, identifying some low hanging fruit that could mitigate some of those flooding hazards. So yes, to what you're asking about is, you know, the the this particular flooding issue would be looked at as part of that townwide plan. It drilled down a little bit. You come up with what's the next steps in order to make this happen, and you continue, you continue using the resources that the Commonwealth makes available for funding in order to 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 hopefully get to your end in solution. So yes, it's on that list of that overall townwide assessment. So any other thoughts about that? Again, the details are in the matrix, and I just summarized what was there. So again, our next steps are the summary of findings, which is that written report. I'm going to be working with in particular, Mark and probably Ted to get some more details in order to have a very specific summary of findings that that ends up being very detailed for the Commonwealth to read. And then you you'll get the MVP certification, which I anticipate within the next four to six weeks, and then the action grant. And on Friday, after working with Bob and Mark, we submitted an expression of interest to the Commonwealth. They were asking communities to submit, they call them expressions of interest for grant funding that they would probably be seeking for April 2021. And the town of Hamden submitted two. One is for that townwide bridge and culvert assessment, that would again identify low hanging fruit and give Mark in particular a plan to move forward with how to address some of that new and existing flooding that's occurring. And the second action grant is to go back to the Main Street Bridge to look at what would the next steps be. Steve spoke about, is it a replacement? Is it a repair? Getting Mass DOT at the table? What would they support with respect to funding? Again, back to repair or replace. And and how do you address in particular if it's a replacement or a repair? You still have the same water challenge, flooding challenge. So what can you incorporate to some green infrastructure, BMPs and others that could still reduce the threat, even though the capacity of the bridge hasn't been enhanced? So that's where we're at. We we've, you know, we we got a lot of information from the town and those participants, as well as Bob and Mark and Ted. And then to keep your MVP status, what's needed is an annual review of that priority list. That priority list, again, is the beginning of a discussion. It's 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 not the Ten Commandments. It can be changed as as new problems pop up or as old ones are addressed and come off the list. And it's also, as noted, a a great start for your hazard mitigation plan update. So that's what I have to add at the moment.
Any questions?
No.
Comments?
No, I, you know, I think we're moving forward there, actions to get this phase completed so that the town could go looking for state resources to assist in addressing some of the problems that I guess everyone seems to be aware of.
And I want to thank everyone for their participation and your help in this. I mean, we love our little town. We want to keep it safe at all times, and particularly with the climate situation. So thank you and everyone who participated. Thank you. And we're going to continue following up on this.
Well, thank you. You you've got a you've got a great town, and and those workshops were fantastic.
You know, I said to Mary, how many hours? Four hours? And I said, that's not going to happen. Well, I expected people to drop in and then drop out. Those who chose in typically stayed for the whole period. I did. I didn't think I would. For the first one, I did. But and I said, I said to the board, the they then sent the access to the recording. And I thought that those recordings, they mixed in a lot of information as well as discussions of particular problems in the town. I found it fascinating. So.
Good. Thank you. That's the whole point. Keep people engaged.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you for being patient for us being late.
No problem.
No problem. Have a good night.
Yes, town administrator reporting, that's it. You must have a copy of it.
I remember the dates attending those things, but it wasn't.
Town administrators report.
Okay.
What do you have to report?
Is it in here?
Well, while you're getting it.
You should have it in your pack.
We got selected report.
No, no, while you're getting it. This is for the goal we're supposed to be working on, take a sheet. And I gave you this for homework, because I'm a teacher. But just to think about so we can have our discussion next week. Okay? So this is nothing for now, but I I don't send things on email. So or so.
Pam and I have gone through minutes all the way back to 2019, so she can tell you where we stand.
Okay.
While I'm getting this report.
She's printing it out.
Printing it out.
Essentially, what I showed on the agenda, what is this?
Yeah, the January ones I saw, and then.
Yes.
And then the Friday one.
I got like one, two, three, four of them, April, May, October, a couple of October. Then we got January 4, 19, and 25, and that's it?
Yes.
And all of those we have in our packets now, right? So we just have to read them and get ready for next week. Okay.
I see the 21s here. I didn't see any other. Are there some from 20 or something?
27, April 27, May 18.
Being, you know, I didn't see them here. I didn't see any of the 21s in the folder.
The 21s?
Twenty, twenty.
Right.
Ones. April, April, May, October.
Ones.
You mentioned me, you mentioned four of the 2020s, and I don't see them.
They're not all in your packet. Take that, because I reviewed these while you guys were upstairs. Replace the one you have. So I'll have everything pulled together.
While we're waiting, looking at the list of town meeting articles, I think we know that we should be adding the bylaw adjustment.
So the stormwater.
I think we have a sense that's coming up.
Yeah.
Pam did make some adjustments. You added that list.
Yeah, for the warrant articles. Yes, it was the stormwater. We've got the assessors. CPC, I only know about the tree.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't had any meetings posted yet. So at this point, there are no other submissions.
Right. But I, did I tell you that I had seen something from, I'm sorry, do you want this? Something from the Historical Commission.
Well, what I was going to bring up is we should put a placeholder on for Academy Hall. I brought it up to the board before, and I think you all, in our general agreement, it's something we should look at addressing. You've done, the Historical Society has made a commitment that they would participate with the town in a painting project. Bob, I know you've talked about in the past, and you volunteered. Well, basically, his point is that the crazy money, the quote before of 150,000 was, that's great if we're doing Paul Revere's House, the historical standard. But, and Bob said, you get college pro in here for probably 20. So there's got to be something in between that's more realistic. But the longer we let it go, the more. But the longer we let it go, the more it is going to cost. You know, if you walk by, take a look, you see there's chipping, et cetera. So I'd like to ask the board to put a placeholder on at least for, basically, painting of Academy Hall. And then I'll circle back with the historical and see where we're going with that. If they want to go out and get quotes, that's a great thing.
But it's clear that it's time. I've walked around the building, we've looked at.
It's past time. They've been talking about it for several.
Well, we looked at the, unfortunately, you know, we had people that said it was, it had to be held to a standard that was historical, and that was probably more than the town could afford at that time, even with CPC money.
Okay, for the Administrator Report, we've already talked about the agreement coming out of the impact bargaining sessions, been signed tonight. I mentioned to you earlier also that we have signed copies, signed by selectmen in both towns and other officials. Capital Committee continues to meet every two weeks. We have gone round and round with the Fire Department expansion project. I think finally last week, some progress was made. One of the members of the committee, that who's on here, suggested that we ask the chief for a list of essential vehicles. Now, if you look around the building, there's vehicles sitting outside. It's not clear to me if we need two passenger vehicles. There may be some implications of the new ambulance service for free tier response. If the ambulance is arriving in five minute, one second, on average, does that not diminish the need for our emergency responders, at least police and fire? Does that, does that not diminish the need for them to attend those kinds of events? In which case, do we need two effective, a fly car and a second car? Do we need two? So we're going to, we're going to focus on the number of vehicles that are required, which then has implications for the building. In talking with the chief, he has also volunteered to provide a proposed floor plan for the renovation, taking some of the ideas from the Mitchell Report, but modifying them to basically try and reduce, where possible, the expense that would be involved. We don't want to overbuild or underbuild. We want to build for the next quarter century or so. And so by next Tuesday, which is the next Capital Committee meeting, I think we should be, we should be making some progress there and coming up with that component of a, of a capital plan and coming in with a recommendation to the selectmen. Following that on the agenda is the study of the senior center and what needs to happen And as you know, also, there's the third project that the town is engaged, is the expansion of the highway garage. And I think we updated you at meetings that John and I have had with Larry Tuttle and with the Highway Superintendent, try and bring the cost of that project under some control. And I think we also anticipate asking town meetings for some additional funding. So this will be on the plan. As I mentioned to you earlier, firefighter Matt Sterling is leaving the town. And the chief, and I have talked about this, and we're setting up an exit interview, which we will then provide to the board of selectmen. We've already talked about the video conference coming on the third. I will send out to you the code for the conference call if you wish to dial in, 10 o'clock on Wednesday morning. We have the Zoom system set up in the auditorium now. In fact, the system, I think is going to work very well. The Conservation Commission started out, the one missing thing was they needed an HDMI cord, which we now have, to connect the television with a laptop. And so it's going to be possible to sit at a table, look at the screen, and also be able to look at people who come, come to the meetings in person when they choose to do it. Next test of this in the auditorium will most likely be the planning board on the 24th. I've offered to help them set up a combination Zoom and in-person meeting. And we, we're still holding bi-weekly departments and staff meetings. And that's the report.
So you think our goal is that we'll, we'll present our budgets to advisory on the 15?
Yes, I just, I went outside a few minutes ago, and I talked with the co-chairs. They're asking that the selectmen arrive at 6:15 next week.
No, next week, the eighth.
That's what they said.
Have we really? I thought we were still waiting for answers back on our budget stuff.
We didn't actually talk about the date, but I just assume it's next week.
I think we're looking for, we were waiting for some of you were getting back on stuff.
Yeah, we had some other questions.
Clarify that.
And I don't want to make more of it, but our budget, in terms of like budgets they're dealing with, is not, is not that critical compared to the fire, the police, the, the big ones.
Schools.
So we will clarify that.
And I reported earlier that we have had word from Marcus Communications, that they have the tower climbers to climb the tower on Monday to put the antennas up for the new emergency system.
You know what would be great for that? If there was like drone coverage over the guy climbing the tower.
Yeah, if someone had a drone.
Live, live stream that drone coverage, that would be.
If someone had a drone and could take pictures of it, that'd be great.
That would be.
Yeah, too bad.
Yeah, no kidding.
Anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Good night, everyone. Have a good night.